The Palatine County Board of Supervisors workshop meeting to order. Mr. Smith, if you could let people know how they can attend remotely.
Listen, Chair, during the public comment period, if you wish to speak from home, you can use Zoom to raise your hand or if you call in, if you press start button on your phone.
That sounds great. If you can please stand for the pledge, Mr. Byerley, if you can lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible.
Here, my fellow, thank you for another wonderful hot day in Palatine County and all the blessings we enjoy.
Amen.
All right, any requests to postpone or amend today's agenda? It's not, I'm moving. No, all right.
Second.
All those with papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We'll now have our first public comment. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward and state your name and full address for the record. If you have three minutes as an individual or five minutes if you're speaking for a group. Seeing no one here, anybody on Zoom?
We are clear on Zoom.
Clear on Zoom. All right, last opportunity. We will close the public comment period. Now moving into our workshop discussion, we're going to have a continued discussion of the comprehensive plan. We will start with the natural and cultural resources and I believe the AFE has a brief presentation.
Yes.
Mr. Max Tenderlake from the Ag Porcelain District, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, my name is Max Tenderlake, 4D79, Borseville. Today I'm speaking as the Chair of the Ag and Porcelain District Advisory Committee. I thank you for your resolution to continue this valuable program for our county. As you're aware, this program is governed by state code. Earlier this year, our team created an outreach group to help answer many questions about the program. During that process, we also reviewed Chapter Seven, Natural Cultural Resources Section of the Complan. Both our outreach group and our AFD advisory committee are recommending the changes included in your package. In addition to protecting agriculture and parcel land, these changes to the Complan will highly, will highlight ecologically sensitive lands to be protected. In addition to the enthusiastic support, many hours of meetings and research by our committee members, I'd like to thank Rachel Henley, Bob Rowley, Sally Taylor, and Tom Skobur for their support. The Help Preserve and Depp is a tool that committee has developed to help educate the public. A number of our subject matter expert committees members were not available to attend today while we try to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, sir. Looking at this chapter, Allison, do you want to give us a refresher? What did we, what did we do with this chapter? We did, did we talk about this one yet?
Natural Resources.
We did skip over it, okay. Do you guys want to discuss the natural resources today?
I have some questions. I got on with Max.
Okay. We're here.
So questions, if I have a problem with what Max told me. Okay. If we could, we don't have the page numbers on this, I'm sorry. You need to make move past the map. There were recommendations for natural resources. And you have objectives and strategies. Look at objective NR2. And then the strategy is to promote a village concept for new development. We've gotten rid of the village concept.
Promote the village concept in new development areas where sewer and water is available.
The villages are.
Although it's fine in the village, we still have the village concept in the village.
But that is not to protect integrity, quality, and function of groundwater reserves across the county. See, this, this is left over from the other one where we had villages all up and down sixty. So it just, it's something that's left over that doesn't apply anymore.
I want to, if we want to keep something there, we could say promote or encourage conservation style subdivisions, some, something related to that since there is interest in doing more of those. See, or words for it completely, if that's your problem.
Look at the one above that, maintain the minimum lot size and buy rights subdivisions of ten acres. Well, that's not a question. That's not a question at all. The real question is whether we use conservation subdivisions, which is a separate subject. This just didn't seem to make any sense given today the way it was written. There's nothing wrong with it, it just doesn't do anything. We don't have any village, we have eight village. I'm sure.
Yes, sir.
Some of, some of the different signs is promote a village concept with new development areas where sewer and water is left. So we're promoting a concept where water and sewer is available. I'm not sure that's true.
So you all want to take that out? I mean, we do want to promote the village, the village, but you're right, the village by itself is the village.
Right.
If you look at sixty.
But remember, the objective is protect the function, quality, and integrity of groundwater resources. So that has to be linked to that.
Yeah.
And I don't.
If you're on water and sewer, then groundwater resources is kind of a moot point.
We don't, we have water and sewer, we're going to use.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, so I think you probably could get rid of that whole statement.
That's more obvious.
Yeah.
And the objective NR3, the last strategy NR3B, bottom of that page, okay. Says manage growth so it happens in an orderly, focused, and predictable pattern. That's not a strategy. That's a, that's a statement, it's just not a strategy. I mean, that's one of those wonderful, let's, let's God bless the world.
Yeah, but it's not realistic.
Well, it doesn't say anything.
Focused, though, you could say focused. I mean, manage growth so that it happens in a focused.
Okay, but what is that? That's supposed to be a strategy to get you to the objective and it's, it's so broad and sweeping, that's the problem. There's nothing wrong with it, it just doesn't do anything. It doesn't lead anywhere.
Right, I'm ambivalent, I mean, whatever you all think. Mr. Byerley, you can.
Good job.
No, no, I'm.
Let's go on. Let's look at the next page, okay. The start of top strategy NR3. Establish growth boundaries for village, suburban, and rural development areas and plan for transition between each other area. We've kind of really changed all of it, okay? That's, that's, that's gone. We don't have those things anymore. And we don't have transitions between.
What do y'all think?
It's true, that was part of the village concept that, that, you know, we would, we would have something that would have been.
Right.
Marching out to the less intense area or keep it higher up.
I'm trying to think if we still have that a little bit, but not. It's in our future land use plan, if you look at it, you know, it kind of goes still, just the development that's there by right, almost, not by right, but already there, it's kind of like, but again, I'm not sure. No, this is not.
That statement just doesn't make any sense with the way we reach in, we purpose the whole management.
Okay, we can eliminate that if you guys, if I eliminate that.
Require connectivity between open spaces of adjoining communities. Y'all, would you take a look at this because I want to talk about this. In the context of a real life situation. It's very interesting. This is Chuck Carlisle's conservation subdivision. Okay, this is, this is what it looks like. And the open space is sixty percent. Now, if you look, can you find Walker's Ridge Terrace, write a book, okay? VDOT has come back and said, we want this to be, you know, because of connectivity, we want you to put in a road from Walker's Ridge Terrace over to the main entrance, okay? Which serves no purpose. And is very expensive. Now, the hook on this is unless we get some type of waiver from VDOT, and this goes way beyond this, okay, some type of waiver from VDOT, then the road cannot be taken into the state system, which will be a major setback for us using conservation subdivisions, which we wanted to make major focus. And so this is the first, here's the first live one, okay? Up comes this problem. And so as we start talking about connectivity, the places to have connectivity and places not to have connectivity. If you look at this conservation subdivision, it really is not designed to have people driving through it and continuing to drive through. It is sixty percent for the, for the people that live there, it is something of an art. So we've got to figure out what we want to do with connectivity as it relates to conservation subdivisions.
Well, and the bigger point will be what will VDOT allow us to do.
Right. Tom, you talked with Mr. Whackney.
I did. He recommended that Mr. Carlisle go back to VDOT and ask for that waiver. And he advised VDOT is pretty open to giving waivers on these types of things.
We need to sit down and tell VDOT about what we're trying to do so we don't fight this battle every time. I just, this was a good time to bring this up. Tom and I had a chance to meet with Mr. Carlisle and look at it. This is the kind of thing, I think, from what I can see, we're trying to develop, this is sixty percent open space.
Would you ever want to?
There's going to be.
Although, one thing about it, do you ever want to have connectivity in open space?
I want the option.
Yeah.
I want the option, there might be, there might be a configuration where it makes sense.
Yeah, absolutely, and you could increase trails or whatever.
But, and that's, so that's always a topic of conversation. But we shouldn't have to go back and fight VDOT every time and go through it. They've got an engineer who's, who's chapter, decided chapter and verse, going back to when the earth was created. So getting back to our strategies, we don't want to, for my management, we don't want to always require connectivity.
Just say when appropriate.
Yes. The next strategy, explore the use of residential mixed-use developments. We're down to one possibility. Kind of one, one category, it's not a category, it's not, not location. And there are only two.
Three if you include seven eleven.
Sorry?
Three if you include seven eleven.
Yes. But do we want as part of our natural resources, explore residential mixed-use developments? That just doesn't seem to fit in here. I mean, this is a part, this is a part of natural resources, preserve open land and green space with special emphasis on the protection of land that are essential to the maintenance of county biodiversity and overall economic health, including the following. Because this is one of the strategies, it doesn't seem like there's a link to the strategy, that's all.
I mean, if, I think a more appropriate place for this would be probably in the housing section. You know, maybe a strategy.
There's a place for it, it's just not, okay, it's, it's a part of our plan, okay, but it's not, it's not here.
We can eliminate it from here and then maybe look at adding it in a different section.
Let's just move it.
Yeah.
The question is where, too.
Yeah.
The last strategy on the next page says encourage or require applicants to submit environmental impact studies for rezoning requests involving a hundred or more acres. Which is, are we going, are we required, are we going, what are we going to do?
I would encourage, I think it would vary on the application.
Do we, Brett, do we have any, do we have a set requirement of any kind?
With the conservation subdivision, require a resource map. That's the closest would be the resource map, but beyond that, I don't think we do.
What, what is the resource map?
Showing like the prime, prime soil areas, things like that, where we prefer preservation of certain.
That's very different than environmental impact.
Yes, that would be the closest thing, otherwise it's purely triggered by DQ regulations.
Exactly, I probably wouldn't, I would just say encourage, because the reason being is, who's going to look at it? I mean, do we have the staff that can analyze it and say, oh, we should do this or we shouldn't do this? If we don't, then don't require it, it's an added expense.
Well, we do, we do that for things like solar farms, when outside.
Correct.
Third party, and that's where you're going with this, is a third party, which makes it more expensive. And I don't, I don't, I don't necessarily see the value in that, that that's.
This, this is, if we want it, it's better placed in the ordinance, we have a rule right here, I could see, you know, if we have a case come before us, it might be asked to, did you ask the applicant to provide an impact statement? He didn't, but the Complan says we should have encouraged it.
Yeah.
Do we do it for every single development?
Right, exactly.
If, if we're interested in this, then that's fine, if we tweak this language and say, we need to explore, put in that in the ordinance, and coming to criteria, it's true.
I would agree with that, I think that would be more appropriate than just kind of this, well, we're going to pick and choose which projects that we want to do the statement for, as I can see. So eliminate this out of here and then if we want to do something like that, plug that in the zoning ordinance?
Yeah, either we need this or if you want the zoning ordinance, then here, tweak it to say, you know, explore environmental impact study requirements in the ordinance or something.
And I just, I was having problems getting a link between the strategy and the state.
Okay. Which, jazz that up a little bit, explore or whatever, yeah.
The next one is a question under object NR5, the next, the next one down. The middle strategy, which is NR5 point C, work with the Richmond Regional Planning District and user groups to create a comprehensive working Viking usability plan for county. Are we doing that? Is that something we're doing?
There's a subcommittee of that, so we don't have them yet, yeah, they are studying this as a region, we're part of that.
My question was, does that actually happen? The answer is?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Although we should change the plan on the end.
That's all I have, Matt.
You got Mr. Bear, Mr. Byerley? You good?
Yes.
All right, moving on, got that, next, transportation. Brett, would you like to take the lead on that?
Sure. So the presentation of the last chapter had changes to it that we haven't reviewed, Chapter Ten, Eleven, or something, the same as they were. So summarize the changes to the current Complan proposed by the planning commission. So general taste of the text. Added information about VDOT's arterial preservation network, which is some of the primary, most important roads that they must preserve capacity on. That was a large part of the Route Sixty study that was done, completed earlier this year. Had a new section about level of service, that's been a big, you know, concern of the board. Is the level of service on some of our roads prior to sixty, so addressing that directly in the Complan. Adding language about rightfully dedications as part of new development. Create the whole new section, multi-modal connections about bike, pet, infrastructure redevelopment. Section of our character about the style of transportation improvements, especially meeting at sixty, how that's part of our character and our style. Updates some of the costs of projects in the plan, revise priority in short, long term, efficient air projects. Oriented by type and add projects that have come on through the route supplement. And I'd say the audit of Route Sixty quarter, conservation study, warrants previously on the books, and we're going to incorporate those in the plan here. So that's a summary of that, if you want to go through and see what else you might want to change or what we'd have to have. Some time about, do we want to use a consultant to do some kind of a larger rewrite of this or a more major update to the major thoroughfare plan? So we've talked to some consultants to do that type of work, we've talked to other localities that recently had major thoroughfares. And without request for information, just, yeah, see who might be interested in that, so we had a few companies that reached out, they, they would be interested in doing that type of work. The difficulty for us has been scoping the cost of it, because they need to know what, what precisely what's done before they can give us the cost estimates of it. They range, they range widely. So thought maybe the next step for that would be, let's, let's go through this, see what we like and don't like about the Complan as recommended by the planning commission and see if we can, if we do need a consultant for, or is bringing in those transportation projects from the rest of the quarter, or some of the safety audit, the others that we didn't have. Does that build up enough in here where we don't feel we need a consulting company? Before we approach a consultant, we get a good list and see what we like and what we don't like.
Do you think kind of, you, Frank, Allison, think that we, given the two recent studies, the seven eleven and the sixty, there's enough projects in there that we could plug in and we could probably go in and whittle away part, some of these thoroughfare plan projects that we know are never going to come to fruition, especially given, you know, our current land use plan. We could, some of the roads that just won't ever be built, we could, you know, would you guys feel comfortable going in, whittling that list down a little bit and just saying, okay, whatever extension off of, you know, can get taken out to the tune of seven million dollars that we're never going to, you know, we're always going to have limited transportation funds, so we need to figure out where realistically we're going to be putting those. And we don't really have any with the current land use plan. I mean, even if they're doing these conservation subdivisions, you're really not going to be getting a developer coming in and putting in roads and stuff, realistically, you're not. You know, so I think you could probably whittle most of those away and focus your efforts on the sixty and seven eleven improvements, which we kind of know what they are.
Yeah, the conservation subdivisions aren't going to have proffers, so if we have a, a long-term plan for a road here, we get a bunch of conservation subdivisions, it's not like a traditional development.
Exactly.
Profiling along the way.
Well, let's, hold on there, that's not quite true. We haven't made a decision on rural yet, there have come a question. Give you an example. If we wanted to keep the five acre conservation subdivision, okay, let's assume we wanted to keep that, okay, as, as an option. Then, in order to get there, you've got to rezone A10 to R5, okay? And there analyzes, then, then you can do a conservation subdivision, there analyzes the ability to ask for proffers if we want to.
Correct.
Okay, so I'm just, we're pointing out, there's a vehicle, if in fact, we haven't made that decision, I understand, okay? There is a vehicle to get to some level of proffers if we wanted to. Okay, as a result of rezoning it to R5, so that you have a conservation subdivision.
One, one, point on that is the state law requires we have a buy right, plus their conservation subdivision on the books. The currently are conservation subdivisions, this buy right checks that box. If, if we wanted to go to R5, rezoning route or something like that, which is fine, we would just need to either preserve some version that we have or create something new.
Okay.
We have to allow a buy right.
The conservation subdivision is by right, they have to rezone the land to R5s.
If we go with your option, yeah, and he's saying.
State law requires we have agricultural like A10.
Well, we read that.
Yeah.
The question is, if we decided that we wanted to expand, okay, conservation subdivision star five, in that situation, we have a liability because of the asking reason to get somebody, whether we want to or not, whether we want to go that direction, we haven't made that decision, it is.
And as we, as we look at some of these, and again, if we take them out, we should take them out because we don't want them. You know, the Complan is a long-term document, so, you know, there's a time, you know, probably several Complan versions ago, where, you know, two eighty would have been realistic. If it hadn't been planned for things, it would become, and by more expensive, so I would just differentiate between, we don't want that project, whether it's funded or not, or if we do want it, we don't think it's going to happen for fifty years, but eventually fifty years are going to be here, have we planned it for that?
Correct.
Again, some of them very unrealistic in our timeline, but I would.
Eliminate necessarily.
If we think it's good plan.
Which, and we've already designated them, it's like.
The long, short, medium, and long term, yeah. And the irony is, I mean, I think if you look at that, most of the ones that were designated, you know, the two to five years or whatever, they haven't come to fruition anyway. So I don't even know if we realistically should eliminate some of the timeframe on it if it's realistically not going to happen, there's no point putting.
I think that's going to come to the fore, I'm sure if we could, as we start one through the pages, because I've marked up this chapter. I think a lot of what we're talking about right now is all about, because as we go through that, some of these issues that you're talking about now will become apparent, that we can do some of the things that you're talking about. So if we could, I like to go through page by page because.
I have, I have some questions, I'll push couple pages. At the very, very overview, the very top says, two kind of roadways in Palatine County.
What page are you on?
One thirty seven.
One thirty seven. The three. Fine, we have a whole system called the CCC roads, these are, okay, which are not private roads by definition. Private roads by definition are owned by the group, okay, that's what it says, the group has the common ownership. The CCC roads, of which I own one, okay? The owner of the property owns the road, there is no joint, okay? So we have, and we have a fair, we have a fair number of properties on CCC roads. So the point is, there's another road structure, it's not just, neither good nor bad, it just, it's there.
Okay.
Just off the cuff, what does CCC stand for?
The Conservation, Civilian Conservation Corps, okay, it was a nineteen thirties project, okay? And they came in and the forestry service built a series of what they call fire breaks, but they were roads. And they were maintained by the forestry department until the seventies, okay?
I've never heard CCC, I'd heard CC, but never CCC.
Yeah, we, and we see, that's what that is.
Right, I did the fire roads and all that.
Everybody says CCC.
There were lots of them in Palatine.
And it's prolonged, but they're in the, they're on the atmospheric side of the county and they were the pathways for all of the large portions that are there.
Mike, the reason you haven't heard about it, we might solve this, Mr. Carlisle.
And I may be.
I didn't want to say anything, Mr. Williams, I didn't want to say anything. I appreciate that, though, thank you.
Me and Dirk together.
All right, go on.
On page one thirty eight.
Did you have anything, Mr. Williams, on the first page while we're there?
Thank you, Mr. Carlisle, I appreciate the creation. No, I'm fine, I'm fine.
Okay. And they guys jump it, because, you know.
Trust me, we will be turning able pages, I just want to.
Look on page one thirty eight, in the left-hand column. Improving connectivity between Route Sixty and seven elevens, a statement says, we need to improve that, the question is why? What, what is that based on? And I don't, I don't know what is based on.
I can help you with that. That's been an issue for some times in the county. You'll see it best illustrated when you have an accident on either Route Sixty or Route seven eleven. What you will see is traffic will flow from one road over to the other, trying to get around the traffic jam. Because you've only got a couple of roads that, you know, run north-south, like Manic and Jesus Ferry. People can tell you on Page Road when there's an accident over on Route Sixty, because people will flood over to seven eleven, nobody's supposed, I mean, they can tell you once. So I think it's a longstanding recognition that we have few north-sided roads, Bill, to answer your question. But I'm going to go back also and say, you know, if we do need, you know, these concept roads, who's going to draw them on a map? And going back to this, Carlisle's earliest statements about, we have a lot of roads that we're carrying forward from the twenty ten comprehensive plan. Get there, I can't tell you where they came from at the twenty ten. Get there, I can't tell you where they came from at the twenty ten conference plan. Yeah, these others, they're tied to studies, but when you tie it back to the twenty ten comprehensive plan. Where I remember when I was running the first time, I looked at it, totaled up, there was one point two billion dollars of new roads, okay? And nobody could tell me the ideology of where those roads came from. It was just if somebody took a big map and just drew them in. And then we put a dollar figure with them, and again, I don't even know how the dollar figure was built. So that's going to be an issue when we get to that part, okay, that's a part of new roads then, uh, new roads. Now, the other thing on page one thirty eight, uh, we're talking about a couple of states, you know, we have the Route sixty quarter study. Where we have intersection improvements that are being recommended with innovative intersection designs. Before I put anything in the plan, I want to have a meeting with VDOT, so I understand how those intersections work. I'll give you an example, one at five twenty two and Route sixty. I've stared at it, stared at it, stared at it, and I really can't get my arms around how it works, okay? But before I put it in the plan, because when I advertise this plan, I'm advertising to the world. That includes the region, particularly to the Richmond Regional Transportation Planning Organization. That this is a need, we have a pound hand that may carry following in their long range transportation plan. I've I've discussed this with Karen, you know, we've got a couple in that now, so we don't know where they came from. But we can take those, that that's kind of big view. But those are my comments, Matt, sure.
Yeah, Rebecca Wardley, uh, with VDOT, she's uh, going to present on the Route sixty and seven eleven studies, so we'll get through it, we tend tonight. And a part of it will be in on it to then follow back on after that we had that presentation.
Perfect, okay.
One thirty nine, Bill?
Yes.
All right, what have you got?
Objective TRS three. We leave a functional road network that design that reinforces the county's. Who's doing the design? That that's, that's a big word.
Well, Dan, if you go back and look at a lot of these concept roads that are put in. The twenty ten comprehensive plan that nobody knows where they quite came from. Those new concept roads, like the one that's flying, you know, on Old Church Road, the hot lux town that goes into Chesterfield. I'm not sure what that does to our objective of having a rural county. Because you put in a fat pipe going right into the county and creating an avenue. If somebody, you expect them to develop or to come and put in that road. You won't be looking at something like over in Chesterfield, Charlestown.
Right, they're not doing it for free.
They're not, it's currently not comfortable, that there's uh, no altruistic behavior of that way in business. So that concludes my comments, Matt, sure.
Where does that take us with that?
Uh, I think your question's a good one, because what 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 we're showing the world and what we're saying among ourselves, we want a rural county. And yet we've got these concept roads that are in our comprehensive plan of twenty ten. That basically uh, Chesterfield couldn't even in their wild streams keep up with in their go go years.
I mean, do you want to get rid of it, it's.
Well, I mean, I think we need a design, you know, I mean.
I I think some of this is just sort of. Sort of subjective, I mean, I think I don't think everything has to have an exact, you know, link, you know, I think some of it's just an overall statement. It's a statement of intent, it's not necessarily, you know, like, okay, well, VDOT's going to design the road, or county's going to do it, or the developer's going to design the road. I think it's sort of just a function.
They said design, I can't answer the question, somebody asked me, what 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 are you designing for and how is it being designed, I can't answer it. That was my problem. That's why I wrote design question.
Very, very subjective, I just trying to think of an example, I can see if a developer came in, is there a major development that requires, you know. Four lane road, and they want to just build it straight as narrow, straight through, big wide road, you know, we might say that's that's. Doesn't respect our rural character, but something maybe a little more meandering, something narrower.
No shoulders and turvy, right?
It doesn't say that, so again, to your point, it's subjective, I can see how I couldn't use that, you know, better design.
I mean, I mean, do we want to get rid of it or do we want to keep it, you know, at this point?
I would give it.
What do y'all think?
I'm okay with getting rid of it, the less you have in here, the more general you become.
All right.
Look right above that strategy, TR two D. That goes back to require interconnectivity again, and also is working.
I do think you, I I would leave that in, I mean, one thing that we.
Says require, okay, now we're talking about, this talks about redevelopment. And we just said in another place that we want to evaluate, that's all. I would like it to be.
Evaluate.
Yeah, that's all.
TR two D, evaluate redevelopment to be designed, evaluate whether a new development.
Just so we're consistent as we go through chapter to chapter.
Okay.
Page one forty.
Okay.
First objective, promoting food safety and pass law travel. Orders conserve local finance and low cost transportation improvements. Friends, for example, access management, intersection improvements targeted, safety room similar projects ran through the county's capital improvement program. And other local initiatives, uh. I don't know if you need to, but I don't want to go away from the fact that we need to have a transportation component. In our capital improvement plan, we're talking about capital improvement plan, we're talking about transportation. It just underscores again the need to have a transportation proffer, or excuse me, projects. And a transportation proffer as part of our overall uh, proffer system in the county, which by now is a work to be done. We are estimated to get roughly a million five. From the Central Virginia Transportation Authority, we're scheduled to get approximately one point five. There's another wrinkle going on right now with Fall Line project, which I'm not going to get into. Which may free up some money that we normally wouldn't have from the thirty five percent that goes to CBT pay. But I'm not going to get into that, but yes.
So we, I mean, it was two major strategies, either spend it on small things like Holly Hill, fund that, or save it for major projects. And that all has, that all has to be evaluated.
Correct.
Which is the CIP expectation.
Yeah.
Or leverage.
Or leverage.
Yeah. Okay.
I'm sure that's all I have.
I have a question, we're on one forty. We have right in the middle strategy, this strategy, TR five. Look at our objective TR five, look at strategy, TR five dot D is in Dan. Now, this starts talking about multi modal connections. And transportation, first of all, bicycles and walking are not part of our transportation plan. Part of our recreational and economic development, but we're not going to be using walking and bicycling. To get to jobs in Palatine County, it's not what we're doing. Not really part of our transportation component, it's important.
I don't know if I would agree in the sense that in with our transportation component, don't we have um. In here, put bike lanes where.
But that's not not, you're not going to build a bike lane so that you can go to more pedal work, you're going to do it for recreation. Or and it has it has an economic development component to it. That city of Richmond, that went to work.
Yeah, I did gather that it was had an economic development component to it, but maybe I missed something. Why do you, how, why do you think it has an economic development?
If in fact, we had a bicycle wood. Going out of the village of twenty miles. You would attract, you would attract a significant number of people out here to ride every weekend and they would spend money in the village. We already have a small group that does that and they're taking their life in their own hands, they actually have a safe place. Uh, that that attracts people. That's the best. And so I see, I see bicycling and and walking as recreation, not as transportation, transportation. I mean, I've got to get to the store, I've got to get.
I'm fine leaving it in, I, whatever you guys want to do, it does.
We we we'll get into it when we get to multi mode more, I just.
Okay, what what else, do you have anything else on this?
I have a, with page one forty one.
Yep.
Uh, now I'm sure.
Yep.
On the major thoroughfare plan, Brett, do you have any maps? I asked Brett to give us some maps as we could read because, you know, ever since twenty ten in my comprehensive plan, I've been able to read the thoroughfare plan. They can have a lot to do with.
Thank you.
Anyway, we're going to be referencing this, you know, as we go through the plan. Um, in the middle, in the purpose, it says, so all the recommended improvements are anticipated to be needed in the future. I'm not sure that's true, that's a true statement. I think wrong, I'm on page one forty one, Bill, on purpose in the middle of our.
Repeat that again, I'm sorry, what'd you say, many of the.
Into the middle of our, although all of the recommended improvements are anticipated to be needed in the future. I'm not sure that the improvements that we are showing in the thoroughfare plan is going to do that. Be needed in the future, and it's recognized that all these projects can be built in short term due to physical constraints. I want things to short term situation so much as practicality, feasibility, and the three Rs, white wheel and responsible.
Okay.
Not anytime in the, in the future.
Not even in my fondest range.
Right.
Okay. So. That needs to be reworked, uh, whatever we decide to do with these projects as we start going through them and the thoroughfare plan. That will, that can be reworked, Brett, go ahead and ask for that because that as it stands right now, it doesn't work.
I think that, that I, if I'm understanding, it doesn't work because it's saying all the improvements are anticipated to be needed, and we think there's things.
That that are aren't needed.
So I think that language is correct, we 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 would hope that everything in here will be needed, but we should have made the map.
The map matchup with that statement.
Okay, well, they, mapping will match up.
No, he's saying when we take all these projects out and we amend it, it technically should, because if you have, you know what I mean, if you have something on this, you should need it.
I'm just focused right now on the practicality of the projects that are in the thoroughfare plan.
Okay.
That are being shown. Let's go to the right side. This is portion three sixteen, right from your pod, because arterial preservation, that forecast, you're right, two eighty eight. Proven as proposed long quarter here, along the quarter will be evaluated by VDOT to ensure. If they align with the goals of the arterial preservation program. I'm not familiar with that program, okay, maybe I should be, I'm not. That's the first statement, and then if it's VDOT's arterial preservation, who pays for it?
Yeah, so the the arterial preservation program, that's that's essentially what that most recent Route sixty study was recognizing corridors to, um, you know. Carry significant traffic, but will experience significant growth pressure, so those are the places where they want to, you know, avoid more stoplights. Essentially, they want to keep traffic moving, not stop it, stop, stop it. So that's, that's where they'll identify different strategies like arc cuts, continuous green tea, things like that, move a traditional signalized intersection. Uh, so you're you're familiar with it, you know, you've worked with it. Who would pay for it, you know, VDOT, they can identify this corridor is important to us, they don't identify um, the solutions, you know, for example, the continuous green tea. Uh, Red Lane Road would be an example, but that doesn't change the funding mechanism, so it'll still be on us. I think smart scale, CBT, whatever, yeah, so.
And the last paragraph says that Route seven eleven gets back to an earlier discussion we had. Concept roads, new connectors between Route seven eleven and Route sixty. Now, read the last sentence, even Route seven eleven is a two length road plus of Route six thirty five, Manic Town Fair Road. Or implying improvements to secondary roads, potentially construction of a number of. Limited number of new connectors between Route seven eleven and Route sixty, so here we are again, you know, with recognition that, you know. We're going to need new concept roads.
Wouldn't that make the problem worse, seven eleven, you put more connectors in, I mean, wouldn't be, it wouldn't help it.
You'd be funneling more traffic to it.
Well, I'm not sure if you wanted to, you know, Route seven eleven, if you had a way to get on and off easier than going a specified length. In other words, right now, I'm just wanting to remember, you've got a Manic Town Fair Road, you've got Jesus Ferry. Then you go a little bit further, you've got three bridge roads going into the county, and two bridge going towards the center. And you got five twenty two.
Who's going.
I'm 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 getting this, you know, you know, this is coming from VDOT, okay? So I know something about the ideology, okay, that there's some engineering science behind it.
Who's going to build that, though, realistically?
I'm not arguing with you at all.
Yeah.
Because that's going to be part of my, you know, discussion when we get over here to the thoroughfare plan in detail and we can start going through these projects. That's going to be part of my discussion.
Yeah, maybe.
Yeah, okay. Yeah. And I will tell you something else. If you've never had the experience of a new road being drawn on the county map going through people's property. It's imminent, but it'll dominate, you're talking about having fun. Because some of you might remember that that was going to be a concept road, three bridge road was going to come down. Through a former accounting attorney's property, it was going to join in over there on Route Jesus Ferry. Right there, where the entrance is, where you got sign up to those people, things.
Valley Springs.
Valley Springs, then it was going to go down Jesus Ferry, and then. Mr. Sowers had put in Noelwood Creek, he put it in with the idea that that was going to be a concept road that would continue on. Okay, but as soon as you started doing that, you know, that's when people get upset because they see a line going through their property. They'll get real excited and then you get into all kinds of issues about connotation. So, no, I'm not a big fan of they going in there and drawing a lot of the roads, concept roads on the map. In fact, I think if you advertise this plan again with that, with it right there for the public. I for one, will be speaking out about the efficacy of such a plan. Nobody's, nobody's going to buy into this. So I think it's very important that we get this map right, you know, in terms of this is car mix. It was really realistic, what's in keeping the fair goal, but I know all of us share. And that's to maintain our rural character, our rural status in Palatine County. So I don't want to send mixed messages with this thoroughfare plan.
Got.
Bill, do you have anything on one forty one?
I I have questions about. The connector, kind of cross same thing you just did, that was, that was.
Six, six two, was it one forty two, Matt, sure?
Yes.
Here's the statement. This is Tarmac, funding for new projects. Plant Sims has most proposed new roadways shown with the dashed lines on the major thoroughfare plan. Again, we're going back to this major thoroughfare. Says by and large, will be developer driven. Particularly in the target growth area. So now, again, we're going back to these guidelines, these roads, these improvements, that's all the developer. Just said, some of these roads, if you ask a developer to do it, you would have to have something that can't chart a column to be able to get it accomplished. It's just a statement, this is from, and this is carried out from the twenty-ten. Went over to the right side and says.
Before we go to the right side?
Yes, sir. We go to the last sentence on the website. Transportation improvement should be identified and structured by the developer to help minimize negative impacts on local roads. Is it really only to minimize it? Do we really want to see it degrade? That seems to say we will put up with a lesser level of service. That's what it says to me. But, you know, for the developer and I, I, that's not where I want to go. I don't want to see a developer lower the level of service.
I know, um, in some localities, they put, I would think it would go more in zoning that if it's going to decrease their level of service, they need to do some sort of mitigation effort.
But.
But I think that would go more into your zoning.
Mitigation is fixing it after the problem, okay, rather than not creating the problem.
Correct. But say you have a commercial development coming in. You know, it's going to create traffic. So they're going to, they're not going to fix the road before they come in to do their project. They would be fixing it after that.
No, I understand. That's a tiny, this is not.
Yeah.
This says traffic improvement should be identified and structured by the developer to help minimize negative impact. I don't want to minimize that. I don't want to be any negative. Let me, let me share. Yeah, that's due to the level of service, not, not the number of cars.
Okay.
I look at Chesterfield's conference plan in that section, traffic. This is a thing, too many to discussion about not having any lower rate of level of service. Chesterfield expects it in some instances. Let me just read to you this. Modeling results. A thoroughfare plan was developed based upon the results of the modeling and the transportation departments' evaluations. Solving all peak car or traffic congestion by increasing road capacity is not always the right solution. Sometimes the negative impacts of road lining on chase and front piece or the benefits of economic development that way achieving acceptable levels of service. To that end, the thoroughfare plan does not address all attractive projected capacity needs. Is expected in the long-term build-in scenario will result in various levels of congestion. Including levels of service E and F. However, implementation of thoroughfare plan should provide a reasonable level of LPM. Bringing that up for two reasons. One is the first statement where they mentioned their transportation problem. We don't have a transportation problem. If you're looking at it, it's a table. And the second thing is the modeling that occurs, okay? We, we have access to the travel demand model down at the Richmond Regional Transportation Plan Organization. Which they use for the regional cardiogram. And we have contract consultants to come in and run the model, but we have access to that. So one of the important things is, you know, whatever we plan for and whatever we're assuming, we should have some modeling to back up, you know? So we know if we are going to get congestion or if we are going to be lowering the level of service, then we can make an informed decision. Okay? And we may choose, you know, one over the other. But right now, we don't have that ability. So that was the reason I brought this forward. Thank you, Matt.
Okay.
Where does that lead us?
Yeah, I.
I'm, I'm, I'm totally confused. Okay, well, my point being is, was the two points, okay? If you want this, you know, if, you know, if you're saying they can't lower any, you know, can't have any lowering of level of service. If that's what, if that, if that's the shake in the ground, then, okay, you can probably, you know, want to embrace that, okay? Have that, you know, push forward, okay? But if you think that there's any other considerations, like Chesterfield is saying, there might be other things to consider. But for me, I, you know, I want to know, again, from some type of evaluation modeling from traffic engineers, what my projected build-in looks like. And that's what Chesterfield does, or they look out, they, with their transportation department, they can do a build-in so that they can make those decisions, Bill, whether or not, if they don't want any level of services, they can project following, exactly. Can you do it? All right, just forgot.
Why aren't we getting that from a third party?
We are, with the TIA. If a development comes in, right?
The TIA is rezoning specific.
Correct.
Okay, I'm talking about a thoroughfare plan, not for the development, proposed development. I'm talking about a thoroughfare plan that supports the land use plan for the comprehensive plan going at twenty years.
But we don't know what's going in. So how can you do a land use, uh, modeling if you don't really know what kind of economic development you could have on sixty or, you know?
They, they can do it and they do it, okay? You're part of, you know, yeah, a lot, most comprehensive plans should go build-in analysis. So you take the maximum densities on your land use plan, you take the most egregious uses from your institute of traffic engineers. You know, for example, you've got different criteria that you can use, number of employees, type of business, square feet. And then you carry forward the most egregious trip generation. And then you add it in to VDOT's current traffic counts, you know, peak hours and for a, a, average daily traffic. And that's the way that they project forward the traffic counts.
Okay, and then, once you have that, once you have that information.
Then you, once they have that information, then they can overlay that, okay, with Route sixty. And they take, you know, where you've got the data from statewide planning system, where they have the data for each segment, okay, as you go through the count. Where they got things for flow rates, levels of service, average daily traffic. They plug that in and then they overlay that on top of what is existing. And then what is added in at the build-in period of twenty years, they can see what it does to levels of service, flow rates, narrative, the traffic.
Okay, then how does that tie in with what we wrote improvements we want? Like, for instance, you know, like, take the Route sixty corridor study that we have right now, which we know that has, you know, intersection improvements at various intersections. So we get this, the flow rate model. What, and I'm asking this in the sense because that sounds like something with the, that would be a study, right? That would be one of the studies, which I don't know what that would cost. You know, something like that. I think that would be, you know, if you wanted a full build-out analysis, what would that cost? And what are we going to get? I'm not taking this, I'm taking this the wrong way, but what are we going to benefit wise, wise for knowing that if we already know these intersections need X, Y, Z improvement? You know, so now we know, okay, in twenty years, we're going to have thirty thousand more people driving down the road. Okay. What, what, what does that, what does that tell us as far as fixing and doing things differently?
I'm answering, I think, because, you know, one of the things it tells you, you know, do you have a plan that links land use decisions with transportation decisions? That's the first one. You know, does your plan link land use decisions with transportation decisions? Mantra used to be, or Governor King came into office, was, I'm taking this count, was, we didn't do anything. We just said, well, that's up to VDOT. You know, VDOT, you figure it out. We put in a Walmart distribution center. VDOT, you fix it because in nineteen thirty-two, we in Virginia with the Bird Act assumed responsibility for the roads. And then they started finding out around two thousand and seven, that we were taking more roads into the state system than we could afford because by state law, you have to do the maintenance before you can put in money that's left over to new roads. So you're running out of money for new construction. Everything was going to maintenance. So that's why they came out, you know, with the access management that Paul Grasswitz headed up to VDOT. Paul was a former planning director for Palatine County, which was kind of interesting to see happen. So they came up with these ways where they could preserve the capacity they had for maintenance better to have money available for new construction because they knew they were going to be running out. So if we know that we've got a problem, that for example, would cause or, you know, say we would need six lanes on Route sixty from Cheesebury Road in Chesterfield, I'd like to know that. And I'd like to be able to plan for it. And I might say, okay, so what? Okay, so what? Well, then I can start looking harder in terms of maybe it's dedications or asking for dedications, which we're going to be talking about in a minute. Or we can start talking about how we want to do setbacks on Route sixty to prepare for the third lanes. But you want to know, not knowing and having to be stuck with a decision once you made it. I always like to have options. I like to have informed decisions about, and the reason you plan is to look into the future. If you look into the future and you don't like what you see, then you can adjust your plans.
Maybe the way that could appear in the plan is a strategy that after adoption, in transportation, or actually implementation strategies, chapter center eleven. But say that we want to run a traffic command model on a county by traffic command model to kind of stress test the plan, you know, first, before they can do that, we need to have a general idea of our land use and our roads. So then once we do, we can run that test and see, okay, so you're planning this extra through road, the red lane road, but actually based on your land use plan, you're going to have stressors over here where you aren't showing those improvements. So we can, they, they feed off of each other. So I wouldn't be surprised if we have to come back and tweak some things after, but before they can run that, we do need kind of our best, best idea.
Well, you, you need to have your best idea of what your land use, you know, map calls for, okay? And, you know, what your densities look like, okay? We're along the way to doing that, okay? Got that, that going. But if we had, for example, a request into the RTPO to use the travel demand model to do as you said, the stress test, that's no way of saying it's called build-in. We're not in the banking, you know, with, with the build-in, probably ready to do a stress test. But if, if we did that, then we could then come back, you know, to whoever we wanted to task with helping us, okay? What do we do now, okay? It shows, for example, that we have, you know, levels of service, for example, on seven eleven, that we've got issues again that necessitate, you know, new concept, you know, no sidecar. I don't know, but somebody else that's a traffic engineer that's in the business can tell me what I can do based on a new cardiogram that projects that twenty years from now.
Um, okay. I, I, for me.
How do we change any language in here?
Well, for, for me, a lot of that's going to be on cost. If something like that's going to cost the county two, three hundred thousand dollars at first blush, some of the numbers that Brett had explored, you know?
Hold it. I didn't say I'm spending two or three hundred dollars, thousand dollars. You know, that's a false argument, okay? What I, what I said was, you know, we use our resources that we have available to them to do the stress test and travel demand model. And then based on what we feel like we need to do, we can give requirements, you know, in a, in a form of an RFP, to be able to get a competitive bid to better solve what we're looking for. But until we know what we're looking for, we can't do anything other than just, or say, I'm not paying three hundred thousand dollars. But that's how you move the table, you know? What I'm trying to get at is having more information, at this point, it won't cost you a thing, right? But it's not a cost. Okay, so it'll cost us. So I'm not afraid to use something and get back part of my dues that's going to help me test my plan. I'm not afraid of knowing that.
Okay, you guys ready?
I'm ready.
Yeah.
Page one forty-three. This is the multi-modal connection piece. At the top of the left hand. Including local pedestrian and bicycle network can provide a variety of features. Provide more transportation options. I don't think so. We're not really providing bicycling and walking, providing transportation options. It is providing recreational, which is, it has great value. I like it, but it's just not transportation. If you go down to where it says bicycling, bicycling for both commuting and recreational purposes is a component of the county's transportation system. We're not commuting, commuting for bicycles in Palatine County. We're not, okay?
Not yet.
So bicycling is not part of our transportation. I like it as part of our recreational. I like it as part of economic development.
I wouldn't take it out of the transportation altogether. I, I think if you have, somebody wanted to come in and put any bike lane, it, it doesn't hurt to have it in your transportation section. But if you guys want to take it out, you can take it out.
So you see bicycling as, as commuting purpose in Palatine County? That's what it says.
You know, do you guys want to take it out? Well, I mean, I mean.
If, if you say isn't commuting services today, no.
No.
If it's based upon Mr. Williams' previous argument, if it's commuting services in thirty or forty years, when you put six lanes in, maybe it is. So it depends on where you want to go and how you want to look at it.
It's in the five-year horizon.
Well, five years, ten years, twenty years, thirty years, you know, they're all over the place with this comprehensive plan, which changes, as I've already said multiple times, about every two years, it seems like to me. The I, I'm just, you know, to, 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 to get into each one of these words with every one of these paragraphs that we're going through. Really digging into, you know, you want to be specific to a degree, I think, but I don't know that we need to get so specific with each one of them. And there's some of them that I think that we've taken out and I think is a good thing. You know, when you get rid of the bureaucracy that comes in with this stuff, just get rid of it, make it go away. There's other parts of it, maybe, you know, we should, is it, is it a mountain that Mike Byerley's dying on, whether it says commuting or? Yeah, I'm not. It's just not a big deal to me. I, I don't see that as something that, you know, you sit here is this cost us something? I mean, my perspective is it costs us something every time we come in. These guys, we pay for these guys.
Yeah.
I mean, they cost us something. I don't care if we take it out or we leave it in, either way. It's too much conversation.
This, we got to go a little higher level and move on.
Let's go.
Let's, let's go.
This is a statement, you know, one forty-three, and question, Brett. Go to right, right side, parking lot, okay? Isn't this something we talk about in the whole comprehensive plan? Reason I bring this up, I know we've talked about, why aren't we just doing it? I mean, it seems like, you know, it's something so obvious that we should.
Be doing it?
Yeah.
Be doing it?
Yeah, that's why I'm asking, are we doing it now?
I think we do.
When you say the old, I'm sorry.
They want the, the current, the twenty-ten.
Okay.
Is this something that was brought forward from the twenty-ten?
I don't remember if it is, but I agree, we absolutely should be doing it.
We should just, we should be doing it.
We have most other counties, I mean, less of that, have some kind of a park.
That Von, whatever, is the right chairperson. I think that she did try doing it way back in the twenty-ten conference. I don't know. I remember, I thought they were meeting at the Food Lion at one point, you know?
I saw a lot of cars there.
So, I mean, I don't know if they still are.
They may be doing it. This, this mentions up there at the VDOT.
Tran.
Transit place. That mentions.
That's in here.
It's in here, yeah.
Right, as a location board.
Yeah, but I was wondering if we weren't already doing it. That was my question.
Yeah, get with Von.
There's people already doing border rides in the parking lots.
Right, right.
This was my, and the 2010 plan was added because we participated in a committee of plan RPA. And they designated a couple of spots that coming that would be like.
All I'm asking is, let's pursue it, right? If we're not doing it specifically, it's something. All right, 144. I don't have anything. Oh, they're just a comment. Again, this goes back to how realistic these projects are. We're taking and including these projects from the 2010 Compliment Plan. And we're just folding them in. And we don't know the ideology of these projects and the cost was built. And I'll tell you right now, I'm not supporting these concept roads that are in there. I don't know that this has any value until we take out because I'm not supporting any of that information in 2010. Dollar amounts, you know, where I don't know, I don't have any idea where the recommendations came from. So that this for me is going to have to change to reflect taking out those things that aren't tied to some study or some engineering that I know of, okay? It's just a comment. 145, we've got the new map. The new map is, all reference, yeah, you know, but the numbers, that project is all reference. So now again, we're doing another sort where we're doing, you know, these the logical categories of intersections and thoroughfares, which is sorting them again in a different way. The first time we did was short term and we did long term and we were doing it by dollar amounts. And I was sorting these projects that are in the transportation section by another means. Yeah. I would like to, before we sign off on Route 60 corridor study with these innovative intersections, to have the meeting with VDOT so that I understand what we are putting in if we're going to do that. I want to be able to understand them and be able to sign off on before they go into my transportation plan. Secondly, same thing is true with the Route 60 safety study. Have a meeting again to understand, you know, the short term intermediate and long term recommendations with VDOT on that.
Get that orchestrated fairly quickly.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you want to look at some of these projects, not the Route 60 safety ones, but dig into the ones with the coordinating red dotted lines on here?
Could I? This is exactly what you're talking about. We look at page 148, visionary projects. This is to widen pavements and straighten every damn county, every road in the county. Okay, go through it. That adds up to $574,400,000, okay? We should take all of them. That's just a list. If you wanted to do one, pick one, okay?
I would agree.
As far as I'm concerned, you can drop every one of those. We're going to, from what I can see, where we're going to be spending money is not oh, they got a lot of seat better shoulders.
Correct. And we could do a trenching project, for instance, when they're up for a repaving schedule to a fraction of the cost as opposed to the widen and straighten.
Well, one visionary project is Bill Port Road, widen and pavement. That's at the bottom of 148. We just paint them. We just, we did that. I mean, that's done, okay? But Bill, you know, what I'm trying to do is rather than go through each one of these projects, some of them I'm going to have to, you know. But, you know, when we're on page 146, we list things, you know, the last one is, you know, Smart Scale, you know, the intersection down there, you can ask. Sure, but, you know, we get into some other Smart Scale applications that we've submitted. One is we got funded for is, you know, Route 60 and Jewsbury Road going past the school.
That new doors up right there.
Yeah, so that, I want to make sure that's in here, you know, along with the one where we said we submitted a Smart Scale project, you know, going through the urban property over behind Walmart. Make sure that one's in there. I would also like to make sure that we have the intersection of Jewsbury and 711, which is offset today. I would like to make, we had that in the Smart Scale project. I would like to make sure that that's in there as well. Take a little bit of issue with what they had in here with the roundabouts that they indicated from the Route 711 corridor study in 2006. It said they wanted a roundabout at that intersection. Okay, just give you some history. Roundabouts take up space, okay, for them to work. That would have eaten up a great deal of the mayor's church, you know, right there at the intersection. So to my mind, we don't want to do that, nor would we want to do it at Free Bridge Road, roundabout, where you've got St. Luke's. It wouldn't work because they take up, you know, pretty large area to be able to facilitate roundabout, okay? So I just want to make sure that we don't trip up on those types of things. That even though we have an ideology and we have to substantiate it, we have to call it quantified, we may not want to go forward with the roundabout versus another kind of intersection, perhaps, if you remember Jewsbury and 711. That's my comment. So 147, second one. The Long Island Road, Giles Bridge Road, construct a roundabout, okay? And the plan references the alternative intersection analysis of 2018, which I know nothing about. That's going to be a difficult intersection to do a decent roundabout in, okay? It is more the curve.
It's more of a.
The curve, okay, than it is roundabout. So this gets, gets back to, well, where did this come from? Okay, and does it make sense to that? And I don't have any, I don't have any background information that answers those kinds of questions. Bill, I don't remember. I, 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 you know, I go back to '04. I don't remember.
Well, hopefully we get some of that when we do the VDOT.
That one was, I want to say, when we were looking at Smart Scale projects in 2016 or 17, we asked VDOT to look at a couple of different places and recommend some things. They said we've seen from crash history at Lowell, looking at Giles Bridge, that's an intersection you might want to look at. So we asked them, okay, bring us some recommendations. One of them was roundabout, but we worked extensively with Ms. Woodlock, who lives right there at that corner, sees it. And she makes good recommendations about what practically would work. So there's some, some low cost improvements with signage, I think maybe some shoulder work there that we felt drastically improved it without the full cost and impact of a roundabout. So that's one where, yes, there's a VDOT study recommendation on that intersection, but.
But Dick and Teresa both will tell you that VDOT had no interest in listening to this. Even though they get to count all the actus.
Right. They did end up impacting what happened there. I think they made some improvements.
Could we take that off? Is that one of those type things? I mean, or no?
I'm gonna take it off. I can tell you that.
Yeah.
I don't know if it should ever, I don't know anything about what you just.
Okay, then we can take it off.
Yeah, let's take it off. Yeah, take it off.
Do you want to take it off or not reference roundabout and say?
Take it off. Let's clean this up.
Round here on page 147. Jewsbury and Madison Road, construct a roundabout. Right, one of them, we had that discussion. Again, we've only got a Smart Scale project coming. It's not approved. It doesn't incorporate a roundabout in. So that needs to come out.
Where, where is that, Dave?
Well, Mike is 147, in the middle of page 147, Jewsbury and Madison.
Thank you.
Just to save some time, again, until we can have that meeting with VDOT and go through these innovative intersections with them to understand how they work, I'm not going to be in favor of putting them in the plan because I anticipate that y'all, some of y'all are going to be like me and you don't have a hit fraction on it. Do we really want to?
Okay, why don't we coordinate that meeting? In the meantime, what would you think of Mr. Cox's recommendation with those visionary product projects eliminating that section?
I'm in favor of that.
I think we should eliminate that, yeah.
Let's look at at your mouth. Best show in Matthew, the table 18. This is all Newton.
Right, right.
What page did you say it was? Like 152? It's recommended you connect.
This we probably can do.
Okay, so, I mean, David started off with this earlier, but this is this is headed stuff here. I don't know the genesis of many of these.
Like the first three of them.
I don't know whether they make sense or don't make sense. Where are you, though? Which page? We're talking about 152. We're talking about new connections there. Okay, yeah.
It starts actually on 151, the first three years. I mean, looking at those, I think you could get rid of the first three of them.
I'm going to tell you right now, you know, any of them where it says plan reference and it says 2010 complant, unless you've got some other information that you can bring forward, that's an honest start of a. I need to sit studying for some engineering recommendation. Otherwise, I'm going to assume it's like a lot of these, it's not founded in reality or in science. So any of those, as far as I'm concerned, you know, you can come forward individually and make a case. And I like to say, okay, I agree. But just first blush, it's what I went through? No. Brett, have you got anything you can share?
Yeah, I don't know any of these where it's, you know, my mind concern with taking anything out is always does then something develop there that now it makes it, it can't happen. But I'm not aware of any of these where they're depending development. If we take it out, something's going to get built and I can't do it. So I think we're safe to take these out. And then when we do, we do that traffic demand model, then maybe we'll find that there's a stress at this point and that that would make sense. We can do it there. But then we're kind of out of the man rather than just assuming.
Then you're responding to something that you're seeing that's a problem and then you can make a decision whether this solves the problem, right? Because developer, developer driven, then that means they own the land, okay? And we can evaluate that rather than having it on the list for.
So take this section out?
When I look at actus, referring to what David said, these 20 comp plants, but go back to, I mean, I know where most, pretty much every one of these are. The dollar amounts are unbelievable, you know, 17 million, 51 million, 10 million. We've never, as a county, I don't think we've ever done any projects like that. Granted, this could be 20 years from now. But I think if you go back to something that, that, that Mr. Williams said earlier, you know, you start, everyone, you're going to start taking somebody's property and you're going to have a fight. At that point, you're going to have a fight that you don't want to be in. Because you're, you're just going to have problems. So from my perspective, I'm okay with all of them.
That's where I'm at. Then we come back as Brett says.
If there's a project that comes into play or something development comes into play, yeah.
But going back to what Bill's point, you know, look at platform, you know, like on page 140. Widen pavement and straighten, widen pavement and straighten, stuff all over the place.
Right.
That could be applicable to any road without taking. Well, it is applicable. But it isn't going to happen.
We're okay from Jude's Ferry or Three Bridge Road east to 288. We just did that. So it's not applicable there. That would be that only stretch, right? We did that last year.
Well, we cleaned it up considerably and the big section of it we'll go over with VDOT.
155. This is what I was on the, with Brett, if you're interested in driving the park ride, you know, it makes the VDOT make it so down. Somebody's going to probably already run that. Look at 155. We're talking about building sidewalks, okay? Sidewalks need loops, okay? People like to, the village is full of people where they can go out and come back. This, you know, we're going to build one down to the free clinic. Why? Nobody's walking to the free clinic. They're driving to the free clinic.
You'd be surprised.
Let me, let me, let me help you out a little bit there. They're not walking to the free clinic because there's no sidewalk to the free clinic. If there was a sidewalk there, I think you'd probably see them moving all around through the village.
Sorry, that's not the information I have. The people are not walking to the free clinic, okay? They're driving. They're coming from places like Cumberland and New Year's since we service around the county state.
Right.
Okay, but the point is, that's just a, I don't see, I like sidewalks and I like trails, but I don't see us building stubs. One lane, one side. If we can do this so that's a loop, so that you are going around something and coming back, people will use it more, it's more valuable. I don't know about going from the high school. Where's the high school over to? That's page 156. I've got it going up to South Creek. I don't know how you get that.
Oh, gotcha.
Through the woods.
We'll give them an eight. We got one more and have a sidewalk.
So take that out.
I couldn't figure out how it works. How do you get from the high school, Patterson Road with sidewalk over to South Creek? Why?
Doesn't matter. It's not going to get built to the tune of 1.7 anyway, so take it out.
Well, we have a lot of, that's not the only 1.7.
I think the Huguenot Trail one, didn't they do that on the one side of the road? I think that's done.
It is on one side.
It goes all the way, I think, to Winterfield.
Crosses the creek. Well, it crosses the creek and then does it stop there?
I think it keeps going. I think it goes all the way.
It doesn't go all the way to 288. They don't go all the way to City Center. Well, yeah, before we started building the sidewalk, what do we build it to? Well, that was my whole point is you need loops. You don't need. But no, I mean, there's, there's, there's nothing there for somebody that, you know, if you're building the sidewalk, I would expect a continuation of the existing development that you're coming from. From Winterfield.
There it would have been, I guess. I'm trying to think. It depends. It depends on what happens.
When development does come, they'll put in the sidewalk, I'm sure. Because essentially got one property on it.
Correct.
And she's dedicated to doing that property top role. It's got to be top role if she's not doing stuff.
Should we put it in the complant or no?
I mean, I don't care, but it just doesn't seem like something that she would want to do. That's my only question, just like one of the South Creek, we don't really intend to do it. What's the point?
I think though, having you been here and declaring that we're going to build it before something happens, that's realistic. Why do I think of planes if somebody came?
Came in, you can reference it. Yep.
We don't really.
If somebody wants to put in the line from the school to South Creek.
No, that one we're taking out. But look, the Huguenot Trail one, I think that one I would keep in because that shows intent. Yeah.
Which ones are out, which ones are in?
That Patterson Road one, the high school thing, that's out. But we're keeping the Huguenot Trail one.
Yeah, understanding. We won't build it, but then we have a mass, like the developer, we can point to something and say, this has been on the plan for a while.
Are we leaving all the rest of them in there?
Are we going to do Mann Road to Palatine Middle School? We don't have to do Mann Road. We do Potter, something Potter's do.
Right.
Do we go past it and walk? Who's walking to the high school?
You mean the middle school. I would, I would connect to the middle school. Absolutely, absolutely. That one definitely. Because they could, if you played sports or something, they could walk. I would, I would believe that.
We also requested something, I think, by lots of, it needs to be in a plan, rest of her.
Yeah.
We only have one all-road trail up here. Now that gets us into the recreational, please. Should we be looking at more trails? Do they, are, do they fit in this?
What do you think, Brett?
I think we need a a trail plan that shows, you know, a mass plan of how we would link them. It's like you said, people don't want just a linear trail. They want to connect other things to go around. So I think maybe. It's like you said, people don't want just a linear trail. They want it to connect to other things and go around. So I think maybe to really for us to identify specific locations in here. Other than that, the biggest strategy would be we want to develop a master trail plan, so then we can get cluster visions or commercial development to fit into a piece where we said there were no such trails, then to get them to build it.
I can support that.
So next, the meeting with VDOT. Meeting with VDOT. We cleaned it up a lot.
This is the action, like, okay? Go through the second one, zoning and subdivision for misadventures. Says in two to five years, we're gonna adopt revised regulations. I don't wanna wait two to five. Okay, that, that won't, that's a wrong timeframe for me.
Agreed.
Okay? That, that's, it just, that needs to agree.
Move up.
Move up significantly.
And I think it, once, you know, Frank, Brett can certainly tell us a realistic time expla- timeframe and put that in.
The other pieces goes long down, says topical and strategic plans. Somewhere in there, we need to have a notation for the village overweight district. I run out of pages.
No, we've got a lot of it.
I've got some. The pathfinder plan, you know, development of a transportation protocol and proper policy in general. And so, sure, that's a short term priority, I think, when you. Yeah, proper policy and. And a, and, and the addition of a transportation component in the CIP with a transportation pot for having.
Implementation tools, pretty straightforward. Yep. Um, so, to recap.
Now, I'm sure before we leave there, do we have a timeframe for zoning and subdivision, or what? You said, but we didn't.
That's, I asked those two to compile what they realistically thought they could do, and we'll put that in there.
It's currently in two to five years, right?
Yeah, we don't want that.
So, the only other option is point.
Funny how that works.
You got a point there. Exactly. Six months? Six months to a year.
Matt Chair, why don't you continue to work with staff on this and get, you know, as they get into this and have a better handle on their, you know, workload, what they think they can realistically do? Just, you know, work with them and then get back to us is.
A realistic timeframe. I think, um, next we need to do the, the meeting with VDOT. That's critical, so we can wrap up this transportation section. Then hopefully have one final meeting to go over all the changes.
We haven't been through 4, 5, and 6.
Correct, and that. We have to do economic development and, um, yeah, yes, you're correct.
And we've got a finish rule.
With conservation subdivision.
Right, and we were looking to use some innovation from Canada.
Yeah, which he did do, I think, or you were, you.
Yeah, we reviewed their ordinances to, to see, you know, what's next from that, reached out to their staff, um, to meet what they have to do.
Okay.
We've done some research, but not finished.
Okay.
While we're sitting in VDOT, I'll put the guy back up.
Yeah, we can. What do you all think about, um, next week? We have a workshop on the 16th. Do you want to give it a rest and bump to the week after to do those other chapters?
We've gone.
What do you all think? Are you?
I'm not worried, yeah.
So.
The board meeting is Monday night.
Okay, so we'll be meeting twice in the meeting anyway, so, okay, yeah. All right. We'll, we'll plan on that.
So, we've talked about a lot of chapters now, made a lot of suggestions. Begin to get some stuff back.
She's done that. Allison has kept track of all what we've redlined and changed and.
When, 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 you know, if we don't have to finish this to begin the lookers.
That was kind of what I was thinking. When we go and do those other chapters, I don't know how long those are gonna take, the economic development, housing. Yeah, and if we, we could start getting that to kind. Everything's done, just to sort of start looking at it.
Yeah, I'm just.
Yeah.
I'm just having to update the map yet, but that's like priority number one right now on this.
So that should be easy enough. Why don't we start taking a look at it at the next meeting? We'll go through those other chapters and at least have those, so we can start reviewing it and just wrap it up.
Make sure.
Perfect. Good. Sound good? Okay, um, that done, we will now have our second public comment period. Anyone wishing to speak? Please come forward and state your name and call address for the record. Anybody on Zoom? All right, seeing no one, I will close the public comment period. Any county administrator comments?
Yes, Matt Chair, yesterday, a very, uh, I'm bitter, I think. A little bit, tell you a little bit about it, because I think you're very proud of it, too. As you know, Carolyn Scott, fellow of her family, she, she was killed in Jacksonville, and yesterday, she was brought back from Jacksonville by Coast Guard to Chesterfield Airport, and over to, uh, at Peter O'Neal and Bennett Deer. I wanted to just really acknowledge a couple things. You know, the Palatine citizens who, who received with love lines when she got with, with the caravan, or I guess, I think the caravan procession got to Palatine line. You know, the series of welcoming and acknowledging their loss, you know, that was a very impressive show from our citizen's standpoint. But the Chesterfield County effort was also impressive, because they, they hosted with the Coast Guard and Joseph Lane in Chesterfield, the army. They went beyond a camera, a call of duty, I think, to, uh, to welcome the family, and they had the Coast Guard there, they had police officers from Chesterfield, Richmond, fire departments. It was a, it was a fantastic reception there. So, kind of acknowledged what Chesterfield did. I'd like to write a letter of thanks from here, from the board, to Chesterfield.
Absolutely.
For their various areas that helped us. It was a very nice effort.
Awesome. Yeah, great. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, any board comments?
Yeah, I got one. I missed if, uh, Allison, implementation tools, urban development areas.
Gotcha. Anyone else? Seeing no one. Uh, we'll close that and meeting adjourned.